It could be a remote video and teleconferencing pursuant to one MRS A subsection four zero three dash A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight one zero three seven one three nine two two nine eight four, excuse me, and password zero one zero six one five, or via computer at the link provided on our website. Members of the public may also commit, uh, submit comments via, via the forum at www.sanfordmain.org under email carpent's city council. Thank you for that. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, living, breathing, and just as a rule.
Thank you. Well, the moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call. Councilor Hanselman?
Present.
Councilor Stackball?
Present.
Councilor Tunnel?
Present.
Councilor Landigan?
Present.
Councilor Hurley?
Present.
The mayor Hansler?
Present.
And hi, my name is Tom Cody, Mayor of Sanford. Welcome. Joining me tonight is City Manager Steve Buck and his executive assistants Larissa Ricketts. Uh, minutes twenty dash one fifty two dot zero one, or to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, October sixth, twenty twenty, we have motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Stackball?
Yes.
Councilor Tunnel?
Yes.
Councilor Landigan?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
The mayor Hansler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero and twenty dash one fifty two dot zero one, or to approve the minutes from the executive session held on Tuesday, October sixth, twenty twenty. Uh, we'll do the roll call over again. Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Stackball?
Yes.
Councilor Tunnel?
Yes.
Councilor Landigan?
Yes.
You heard yes? Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
The mayor Hansler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. Uh, any requests for, um, adjustments to the agenda this evening? Okay. Mayor, none. We'll move forward. Mayor's report. Uh, again, just feeling a variety of, of emails and calls, uh, about all kinds of things that, that are mostly unrelated. Um, you know, so I've forwarded those obviously direct to, to the, the city personnel that would be, uh, appropriate for that, uh, situation and, uh, just pushing out a lot of information lately. It seems like, uh, information is hard to come by these days, so trying to do my best to keep people in the loop and trying to solve their problems as we can. Um, I know there's some subcommittee reports, so who'd like to start on the subcommittee reports?
Uh, I can start. Uh, it can be very brief. Uh, the item is on the, uh, agenda this evening, uh, for first reading. It's the JS, uh, variety store property on, um, Route four. There's a request for, uh, a zoning change to resolve a traffic issue as that, uh, building is being remodeled. So, um, we talked more about it later, but we did meet on that last week.
And that was under zoning subcommittee?
Yes, it was. And, uh, it, uh, you know, the, the, uh, consensus was unanimous on the, uh, decision we'll be speaking about this evening.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other subcommittee reports?
I can report on, uh, Public Safety Subcommittee, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hospitalizations are on thirty-five percent in twenty days. The CDC today reported.
Sounds like someone else can too. Anyway.
Very professional sounding report, Joe.
Wow. It's close to the election, I have to chime in. Anyway, the Public Safety Subcommittee met, um, a week ago today, and we got an update from the city manager regarding COVID. Uh, he also reported out, uh, regarding the latest from the state CDC, and the consensus of the subcommittee was that we would not be recommending any changes regarding the city's approach at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, anybody else in that subcommittee want to chime in at all?
Mr. Mayor, may I briefly?
Please. You're a little bit, you're a little bit broken up, so talk, uh, nice and slow.
I apologize. I am having some technology issues this evening, so thanks for bearing with me, but this is Councilor Hanselman, and I just wanted to, uh, just add a couple pieces of info. One, you know, we, we did recognize at Public Safety that, uh, things were evening out a little bit. We were really, um, you know, glad to see that the compliance and people's efforts with, uh, mask wearing and social distancing is really helping, uh, our numbers here in Sanford and York County, but we did feel like it was a little bit premature to jump forward with adjustments to the mask ordinance in light of the mayor's, um, you know, excuse me, the governor's increase to, uh, the, the mandate at the state level and just the fact that we're in line, uh, with that at this point as, um, and it gives us local enforcement ability. And also, you know, I, I believe at this meeting, if not the meeting before, we could talk about the fact that some of our businesses, um, you know, certainly are feeling, um, some impacts of COVID increases in our community and that by having mask compliance and, and showing that the community is really working towards that, it's actually, um, you know, Chamber of Commerce's and, um, Development, um, uh, committees have gotten data that says that people are more apt to come to stores that are in compliance from a percentage standpoint. And so we're hoping that, um, you just a, a little bit longer will help keep our numbers down, keep people coming to shop in Sanford, um, and keep us headed in the right direction. So we look forward to, you know, keeping our eye on it for sure.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I had something to add if I could.
Please, Councilor Tunnel.
Yeah, I know that, uh, Councilor Hansler, uh, you know, was getting an email from the, uh, the Sanford Lodge of Elks about their compliance on the COVID issues. And I was, I know that, uh, Councilor Hansler said that he was to be a proud member of over thirty years, and I've, I've been a proud member for forty-three. And I can only can, can, uh, can, uh, thank them for the, for the letter of confirmation. Would you agree, Joe?
Yes. I wa- I was very happy to see them, um, obviously to take everything surrounding. I don't know what I did, but I'm sorry I did it. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, oh yeah.
It's goo- it's, it's good to see another one of the social clubs, um, taking COVID extremely serious and being proactive to help stop the spread.
Mr.? Councilor Landigan?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Deputy Mayor Hensel a question, um, just because I, I wasn't part of that committee. Do you guys have an idea, like, the goal was to get to green and I, and I totally get like stalling a little bit longer, so we're at green longer. Did you guys talk about, you know, how long that would be, just in case, you know, we, we get into the situation again, we, we know when to pull the trigger and, you know, I don't, we're not asking. We kind of have guidelines already.
Well, I think, Joe. Go ahead, Joe. That, the gist of, of what was discussed is that it, it ha- that none of the items that would cause us to make a decision have occurred yet. And we, you know, the, the schools going green, we decided several weeks ago would be a component of lifting the mask ordinance, but it would not be the only one. Um, so we did not specifically say that we would recommend by a certain date, uh, that we would rec- that we would recommend doing away with the mask ordinance. Um, but if things keep going in the sa- in the direction they have been, that being said, the numbers in York County have gone up a bin, a bit, but, uh, the Public Safety Subcommittee will be meeting next Tuesday, and we will evaluate the information before us at that time. And either then, or sometime down the road, likely sometime down the road, but we certainly, we built, we will be revisiting the mask ordinance when we feel it's safe to do so.
Can I, can I just add for the Public Safety Subcommittee? I don't think the green designation is something to follow. I think, um, the green designation allows certain things to occur, but it still requires masks in school. And so getting rid of masks as we're heading into flu and cold season as numbers are rising quickly in some northern states in the Midwest and other, you know, countries across the world are seeing resurgences. I think masks are here to stay for a little longer, and I can't imagine using the school designation is the best methodology, uh, moving forward. So I would hope you'd look at national trends, local trends, um, you know, cases of other issues occurring in our, in our area before, um, look, lifting that ordinance. So I think it's actually a great difference in our numbers here in Sanford.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilor Stackball?
Yeah, uh, I, I'm not on Public Safety Committee, but, uh, I concur with what's being said here this evening regarding masks. But what I, what I want to do, since I was someone who was particularly critical of non-mask wearers, I want to thank them, uh, for, uh, for stepping up, uh, and, and wearing the masks. Uh, you can see that it is having a positive influence, uh, and I just want to make sure where I was critical of individuals, uh, not wearing masks, that I, uh, thank them for stepping up and, and wearing the masks at this time.
Yeah, I would concur. It seems like the mask, um, wearing has, has become a sort of a uniform thing, uh, which is really what we needed to get to, uh, to, to help slow the spread. So we went from really spotty coverage on mask wearing to, I think, you know, a, a much higher percentage. My concern about lifting the mask ordinance honestly is, is what does that do to, to the sort of the, uh, the approach? And does that cause more confusion than keeping it in place at this point? I mean, the, the expectation really should be if you're entering a public place, you have a mask on. Um, the fact that we had to ask is, is, put this, you know, mandate in place, I guess, tells you a lot about sort of what, what people's views are. Um, so, you know, I, I'm, personally, I'm in no hurry of, of removing it. Um, you know, but that, that's, that's my two cents at this point. But certainly, my, my hope is that we rely on the Public Safety Subcommittee, uh, who, you know, spends a very long time sifting through the data and making sure that they're, they're making a, you know, educated decision, um, on all this. So that, that's, that's the hope of, of, you know, I, the way I, I believe this should go from a process perspective is to get a recommendation from that group and, and then act accordingly.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? Uh, and it, maybe it's for you. Um, so my understanding is this ordinance that we put in place was only for ninety days. So that, that's all I'm wondering is this was an emergency ordinance? Um, are, are, is there background work being done on making a permanent ordinance, um, to replace this? Is that what's, we're waiting on? Um, that's what I was asking on what, what the trigger is. Like, if, if the Public Safety is working on a, a mask ordinance, because I know Councilor Hurley, he mentioned maybe getting us through flu season or something. So I just didn't know if that's the work being done. That's understandable. I just didn't know what the trigger point was. I, I wear my mask everywhere. It's probably why I've traveled so much and haven't got sick. So, um, I'm, I'm, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, on the, on the mask wearing. I'm just wondering what, you know, I just don't want this to run out on us either, and then we're not prepared. So I'm just making sure that, I think we're about, what, forty days out from it expiring?
Uh, but we can also extend it another ninety days.
We? You know, Councilor, I, I guess my, my impression of, of all of this COVID-related, um, issues that we've dealt with is that they're all temporary. Um, and, and, and we continue to extend them, no different than the, you know, the state of emergency that allows City Manager Buck certain powers and, um, you know, the outdoor dining, all that kind of thing that, you know, they, they, they don't live forever. Um, so we, we, we may be in a situation where we're simply voting to extend an, an additional amount of time this current mask ordinance. Um, that, that's my understanding. Maybe City, City Manager Buck could, could help clarify that for us.
Yeah, so, um, originally when the city put the emergency mask ordinance in place, it was a very proactive measure to, uh, address not only the, the positivity rate case within York County, but, but specifically at that point in time, there was, there was a definite, there was identification of community spread in Sanford, which that designation has not been lifted as of yet. Uh, we had, what? Four, six, six, six of the eight outbreak centers at that point in time, uh, in York County. So we, we were definitely a COVID hotspot at that point in time. Um, so the city council put the mask ordinance in place. Two elements in that. It, it absolutely mirrored, uh, the governor's four executive orders prior to that, that, that did the mask elements of that, and it gave us a, a, a better ability to enforce locally and actually an easier ability as in not having to actually perfect an arrest in order to charge somebody with a Class E crime in order to warrant, uh, and or go to a hundred dollar civil fine and, and such under that. Uh, please, please note that the, the governor's last executive order that dealt with the face mask made the face mask mandatory, not just for the coastal, uh, regions, the beaches area, but it's, she's extended that inland, not different than what Sanford has done itself. So we started out in mirroring what was done in the previous executive orders and then stepped up our game, and now the governor's flipped, flipped it around the other way and extended that out for, I see, is the rest of the state. So what we're doing currently actually gives our police department an easier enforcement mechanism. Uh, the calls for service as far as coming into not both nine-one-one as well as the state complaints that Ian gets a hold of have tapered dramatically. So I think there's been, uh, much more comfort level with complying with, with wearing masks because those calls have dropped off precipitously. One of the other elements aside from the green designation, uh, so, you know, k- kudos for York County getting back to green. That's a huge step. Uh, looking at the, and they're, they're only publish, republishing this once a week now. So the latest data sets that are available, we look at the positivity rate, uh, per ten thousand cases. Uh, the twenty-eight day case, uh, York County was the second highest in the state at that time. We had thirteen point four eight per ten thousand. The only other county as, as high as that was Anderson Scoggan at fifteen point nine eight. We sense have dropped in the last fourteen day data set that's available to four point six seven. So that is a dramatic, uh, decrease, uh, but is still higher than the state average and is still amongst the high, highest three as far as counties are concerned in that, uh, last fourteen days worth of data. So we continue to look at that data set as well, as, as well as the number of new cases coming on, on a daily basis, uh, both one day and seven day average. We continue to look at all those data sets and, and the committee having looked at those, uh, was making a recommendation not to do anything further tonight. The other information that I pushed out to, uh, not just the Public Safety Committee, but the entire council on Friday was the state, the Thursday before that, on the fifteenth, the state put out through the ECD, put out guidelines for Halloween. So we had, had much discussion as, does the city need to do something different than, than, than what the state might do? Because we didn't know at that point in time. They have now put those guidelines out. I pushed that out to the entire city council, and I pushed that out just momentarily as a separate memo, so you could have that as one, one document. And my recommendation at that point, after reviewing that last Thursday and pushing it to council on Friday, was to, uh, I recommended taking no actions beyond what the state, I thought the state had put out a very, uh, common sense, uh, approach to Halloween, uh, with the ability for people to celebrate, really frowning upon the large trunk or treat, uh, situations or those large gatherings for concentrated people and, and, uh, concentrated, uh, for extended periods of time. Uh, so I would make a recommendation that the city do, do nothing further than what the guidelines are that have been put out there by the state as far as Halloween.
Okay, so just to clarify the original question, and maybe you answered it. I, I missed it. Um, the, the current mask ordinance, i- is it just a scenario where we extend it? If, if we reach, let's say there's ten days left on this thing, what, what is the action from a council perspective? Do you, you at that point just extend it another ninety days? Is that generally how we've treated all these other items?
Yes. So that was done under the emergency ordinance, uh, provision of the, of the city charter. It's, it's, uh, actually good for ninety-one days. Um, I don't remember specifically what the time, I had to go back and look at the original designation for the, when the ninety-one day extension is up. Uh, it can be extended by another declaration, uh, that the emergency still exists. You have to justify that. And once you have made that justification, then you can implement the, you can extend the ordinance again for up to another ninety-one days. Uh, and it also in, in that ninety-one day period, the city council can, can revoke or suspend that ordinance at any time during that, that time period.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything further as it relates to the subcommittee reports? All right. See none. We'll turn it over to City Manager. Go ahead, Steve.
All right, let me, uh, switch my shares out here. A moment. Where do you see that report now?
Yes.
Okay. So I wanted to go over the, the customer flow into the city hall. Uh, we continue to maintain the, um, door attendant outside. We've had that door attendant there since March eighth, when we opened back up to the public. It's serving the city and the city offices extremely well by keeping the requisite number of people, uh, appropriately within the various offices within the department. This first graph shows since March, uh, oh, sorry, March eighteenth through to, uh, the nineteenth of October. Uh, the orange line here, uh, and this lacks some of the detail because I did press that down, but the orange line shows the total customer flow. And the blue line we were tracking, uh, was the customer flow in the city clerk's office. We have this for all offices, but to keep it cleaned up, it was just looking at the highest flow, which is city clerk's office. When we originally opened up, we were anticipating, uh, pen up demand to start coming back in for excise tax and other services that cer- certain people were not able to perfect using electronic transmission and such under that. Uh, we saw that. Uh, we saw this up spike in the city clerk's office starting, um, approximately in July. And then when the tax bills came out in August, you saw that taper up, come through. There was also motor vehicle appointments getting taken care of in the candy bunk office or South Portland, allowing further people to come in and perfect, uh, payment of excise tax and such under that. Then you could see the city clerk's office had started to taper down as we were caught up with tax payments and other transactions. Uh, but you'll see from, um, October fifth, this dramatic upswing in the total, uh, client flow. And that's this red line down here. So back in July, we had voter registration and such with the, uh, July fourteenth elections that took place. You can see that red bump down here where, where that customer flow is coming in for, for voter registration, uh, and, and other elements. And that was still in the city clerk's office at that point in time. Starting in October fifth, uh, which is the start of the red line, uh, towards the end of the graph, starting in October fifth, we moved operations up to the city council chambers, uh, and moved all of that customer flow up there. Uh, this, this was an exceptionally good move because that, that floor has been busy, busy, busy ever since. Uh, in fact, if you look at the, the data set over here, there was a hundred and twenty-two people, um, as of yesterday that flowed into the third floor to do absentee voting, to obtain absentee ballots in person, uh, to do a voter registration and such under that. Scrolling down here, I, I grabbed that out for just the last thirty days. It's a little easier to see. The blue line being the total customer flow over that time period, and then the bars, the orange bars at the city clerk's office over that last thirty days. And the gray bar comes in when October fifth, when we opened up, start at the customer flow to the third floor for the election procedure proceeding and such. You can see that it's been very, very steady at well over a hundred people, uh, per day for the, for the peak flows in there. Uh, absentee voter registration and transactions, we've had five thousand four hundred and fifty-one. This is a new record. Absentee ballots requested. All of those requests have been fulfilled at five thousand four hundred and fifty-one. Total returned and accepted are three thousand seven hundred and seventeen. I will note that the drop box was a, was a credible investment that has been highly utilized, uh, outback. We've got, uh, new, um, ticker designations on it, further identifying the box. The camera system is working well. I see customer flow there on a consistent basis. Uh, and there have been six hundred and thirty people vote in person since the start of the operations in the council chambers on October fifth. So that's my reference to that constant steady flow. And we, we don't see any, any let up in that. I think it's going to continue right through to Election Day, uh, up there. Next element I wanted to bring up is legislative ag- advocacy. Uh, so as the manager, I work to advocate the city's positions to the state of Maine legislature on two major fronts. One is the Legislative Policy Committee, which is a function of the Maine Municipal Association. City Council has appointed me as their, their delegate to that because of Sanford's size and population, the city gets to actually designate an LPC member. The second member, uh, runs at large, uh, within York County, and that, that would be Gary Lamb, Springvale resident and the manager in Waterboro. Uh, pursuant to, uh, and the way I also do the Mayor's Coalition, which is a consortium of now just the ten largest municipalities in the state of Maine. The first front, the LPC, was very, uh, simplified this year. We did that by Zoom conference, uh, as, as all meetings seem to be as of late. They, they put together a format called Protect the Core Plus. And the four major elements in that, uh, is to focus our advocacy work with the state legislature to continue to move revenue sharing back towards the prior five percent of state sales tax and income tax, move, uh, from the sixty-seven point five percent current reimbursement rate for the homestead to a hundred percent on the homestead exemption program that prevents further tax shiftings within our base, uh, continue to work with the state towards achieving the overall goal of fifty-five percent on K through twelve education. And the fourth and, uh, more, uh, more new element is continue to work with the state to expand, uh, funding opportunities for broadband throughout the state. Uh, the OPC will continue to review all new legislation that's submitted. Uh, there were two, I think, two hundred and fourteen bills that were still sitting out there waiting for action should the legislature reconvene, uh, this year. Not anticipated that they're going to, so those two hundred and fourteen bills will, will die and have to be re-submitted, uh, and, and or let go, uh, for the next legislative session. But any new legislation that comes forward in the long session will get reviewed no differently than it ever has with Maine Municipal Association, and anything that has a municipal impact, uh, will be, uh, positions will be taken by the seventy elected officials, uh, on, on the LPC statewide. And then our, uh, three, uh, free, uh, advocates, our lobbyists will communicate that to the state legislature. For the Mayor's Coalition, their platform remains, uh, relatively unchanged. The nine major items are local option sales tax. They did the predominance of work. They coordinated that with, uh, MMA through the LPC last year to try and obtain a local option sales tax as part of the overall funding mechanism for municipalities. Uh, that's been a very, very close, uh, contest as far as getting that passed. Various derivations, the last, the last bill was so watered down that I'm almost glad that it didn't pass because it would not have had much of a local impact for us. Addressing the opioid epidemic, it's, it's somewhat amazing to me. So continued to work with the police department on the opioid epidemic. City's still part of that class action suit that's pending nationally as far as, uh, getting money out of the opioid companies and distributors. Uh, the, ever since the pandemic has overtaken the topics and the discussion and the focus, nobody talks about the opioid epidemic. And during this, this time period that we've been in the epidemic, we've had more individuals die in the state from opioid overdose than we have, uh, or someone to the pandemic. Revenue sharing, no surprise there. Uh, municipal infrastructure, uh, still working on state bonding as far as roads and bridges and the like. Workforce development, all of us as the largest service centers in the community have a strong recognition that we can't talk, uh, economic development without workforce development and housing. Uh, you can see housing and homeless is number seven. Uh, number six, six is public transportation. We are, um, certainly have a need to increase our public transportation here in Sanford as does all of the large service centers. County jail funding, as it impacts us greatly as far as the county taxes concerned, being the larger taxpayers as far as the, uh, county taxes concerned, the jail funding and how that's mixed between county and state funding is very impactful to us. And the last is renewable energy, which the city is, is knocking in out of the park on solar development, battery storage, uh, backup that's coming as well. And the last el- element, uh, is a little less impacting as far as climate change, normally when they're having the, the climate change conversations, tends to be those communities more impacted by the coastal floodplains, uh, changes in the tides, um, and such under that. Also wanted to report out on the fire grants. So we had applied for two major areas for grant funding for the fire department this year. One was the AFG, uh, equipment grant. We had applied for funding, full, full funding for three CPR compression devices, uh, that would be put on patients should, should that need to occur in our ambulances, and for two additional, uh, striker lift carts to go in our ambulance as well. Uh, that application was not funded. Our Assistant Chief, um, will continue to drill down on, on, uh, Our assistant chief um will continue to drill down on on uh who's the wheres and the whys. And you go through a review process as to how we scored, why we didn't score high enough to get get into the funding. Many times, it's not a matter of the application not not being well structured or scoring higher enough. It's just the the higher priorities established by the scoring committee for that particular funding cycle. The larger disappointment is we had applied for a safer grant for four firefighter positions. City Council had committed to that and gave gave me the direction to find and identify the ability to to fund the match uh should we be awarded. Uh, to that, much to our liking, uh, we learned that in this COVID process, that additional CARES Act funding was put into that particular program. So they announced to us that this three-year period for the award would actually be funded at one hundred percent should we be granted the the award. Uh, and then subsequently, we were not granted the award for those four positions. Uh, so not only did the city not obtain an award, but no Maine community received an award under the safer grant this cycle. I don't know if that's ever been the case before. Uh, we did note that Massachusetts received twenty-four awards under the programs. So again, administratively, we're going to drill down on that as to why not only we didn't get any funding, why Maine received no funding under the safer grant at all. The next topic is renovations at Southern Maine Healthcare, the Goodall campus. Uh, I took part in uh with with several of our counselors, uh, Council Hurlahey, Hanselman, Tuttle, and Lanigan. We're on this particular tour that we we are able to view the new inpatient, uh, the conversion of the inpatient beds at the Goodall, the former Goodall Hospital into the new behavioral health beds. Uh, these three pictures attached from that uh floor in here, so you can see the quality of the work that's being done there. Also attached at the latter part of this, uh, the informational sheet that's put out by the hospital. Elements of of note uh that are in there is this allows for the accommodation, the continuation of the emergency department because the renovations were not only from the former inpatient beds into the behavioral health beds, but it took care of the HVAC systems, uh, the roof, many of those elements that needed to be addressed in order to continue to offer the emergency department, the five surgical suites, primary care, and urgent care facilities as part of that overall complex. Of note, there's forty new adult short-stay uh behavioral health beds in two units. It triples the number of short-stay beds for behavioral beds in York County alone. Uh, it is the most state-of-the-art behavioral health unit in the state of Maine at this time of its opening. It opened um as of today. It now has five dedicated emergency psychiatric rooms that are attached to and adjacent to the emergency department. It was an eleven million dollar investment by Southern Maine Healthcare slash Maine Health. It creates seventy new jobs to the staffing uh blend there. And uh, as was noted by Pat DeApril on our tour, the hiring process has gone exceptionally well. Uh, people are eager to come to the new facilities, the state-of-the-art facilities, and the the quality of the staffing was noted as being exceptional. It upgraded HVAC systems, new MRI machine, and improved the exterior facilities. And it creates this uh a center of excellence within Maine Health in Sanford and secures the long-term viability of the Goodall complex. I didn't plan to pull that up here tonight, but uh from the communications received by Nate Howell today, there's actually a format video. I can send that link out to the city council. Uh, I I'm not aware yet who produced that video. It is exceptional. Not only the the communication of the work done at the hospital and and the video shots of of the interior complex and such under that, they take you through a virtual tour of it, but it talks about the ho- hows and the whys. But the the shots of Sanford itself really are exceptional. Really puts a a nice light on the city of Sanford, the the drone shots of up in the air at this time of year with the leaves turned and everything really puts a nice light on the the city of Sanford. So I'll I'll push that information forward to you. Uh, the next element is a discussion on the Maine downtown affiliate. Uh, it's part of the continued efforts of the downtown revitalization in Sanford Central District. The working group has now engaged the Maine Development Foundation to explore community interest in becoming a Maine downtown affiliate. I put in here a description of what that is. The program's been there since two thousand and nine. Been working with Ann Ball uh with the MDF as far as this is concerned. A it was announced today, they finally set the time and date. Uh, they they want to do a virtual meeting has been set for three thirty PM on Thursday, November twelfth. So Ann Ball will be part of that uh discussion with us. It will simply explore at that point in time and explain what the program is. But it's mostly to gauge what the community interest and support might be. Uh, and if that's sufficient, then a future application could be submitted for consideration by MDF uh as far as that program is concerned. So I know we have the downtown legacy that was a full uh Maine downtown community with a full paid-time director. The affiliate program is is actually different from that. It's a stepping stone to get you eventually to uh becoming a full Maine downtown community again. That's a further further explanation of the program. Uh, and we discussed this uh even this morning at the Growth Council level, and I sort of pointed towards uh what that partnership might look like in the future.
Just so you know, Steve, we were offered that designation. So it was it was around when the the when uh designation was lost, but we we couldn't find funding, so.
Okay. And along that, yeah, I'm I'm aware of that history more, and I also think that we're hoping that we're in a different juncture right now, that 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 was the reason for uh being able to step up the discussion as far as the downtown revitalization, this new business owners, this new level of engagement down there, many new businesses and such. Um, we've we've had good partnering discussions with the CDBG grant and the and the construction that's coming forward with that. We'd like to be able to see if if that interest is there today that that might have waned off or wasn't there in the past. So wa- wish us luck. You'll be getting an invitation to this.
All right.
So the next, the informational flyer, I'll get that in there uh from uh SMHC and a draft of a of a flyer uh that needs to be improved, and that recognition was given on that today. So that's all that I had in the packet.
Perfect. Any questions for the city manager this evening?
I I don't have any questions. I I just have a comment. Um, my wife and I uh voted absentee ballot, and we used the secure drop box down in back of city hall and went down there uh Sunday afternoon and deposited our ballots in the box. Very slick, very easy. Uh, and uh, please, everyone, there's a any number of ways that you can vote. Too many that I can't speak to right now, but they're on our website. Uh, please vote.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? All right. So next up tonight, we have a couple of presentations. We have, uh, the first up is twenty dash one fifty-four dot zero one, quarterly report and presentation from the Director of the Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council, Mr. Jim Nyman. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Cody, Deputy Mayor Hanslip, members of the city council. My name is Jim Nyman, Economic Growth Council Director. I have a few items for you tonight, as well as uh Jennifer Caneely from Caneely and Company is here uh as well to talk about the uh marketing we've done over the past quarter. So the first item is the uh is the Sanford Mill. I wanted to talk a little bit with you about the uh Mills sixty-seven, uh, you know, that space within the uh the Sanford Mill. We've had ongoing meetings with uh Northland as developers. Um, Steve Buck and I, uh, planning group with Beth, uh, any number of occasions, but they they did share some feedback with me from the uh the most recent uh back and forth they had with a very experienced restaurant owner. That person has uh multiple locations in Maine and New Hampshire. They were interested in both, uh, a little bit of office space as well as potentially opening another location. That prospect could not rationalize opening it, opening another restaurant due to the lack of parking was sort of sort of the first item that came up. They said that to make that location profitable, in their experience, uh, you would need at least fifty open spots. You get about two hundred people a day for lunch and dinner. They expressed a lot of concerns about how difficult the parking area is to find and how you must drive through the International Woolen wreckage. They described it as you approach the parking lot. They reviewed a number of parking solutions that we've discussed uh over the month. And the only one that they thought that it would really make sense uh to have an ongoing restaurant there would be demolishing the Boilhouse, extending parking. Uh, in an ideal world, have a parking deck that's accessible off of Pioneer. So many of you have uh have heard these conversations and part of different uh grants that we've approached over the years trying to make some of this happen. But ultimately said um that if these sort of things were in place, that you could take the space in a heartbeat. So every successful restaurant operator that we've had to look at Mills sixty-seven space has commented on the existing parking problem, indicating that it's not solvable with parking at midtown or along the street. People who are coming to eat don't want to walk a long distance and ideally don't want to have a huge flight of stairs. And as you guys know, there's an issue if you enter that building from the front or in fact, if we were able to create a big stairway leading down from uh from Pioneer. Uh, in this most recent case, the customer demographics they felt were actually good, uh, their demographics, a good fit for Sanford, but they also said you have to consider an older clientele that's very sensitive to parking and walking distances. Some other observations that we gathered from them, uh, if the Karen Mill across the mouse and with all apartments are opposite, it could change things because there would be a large captive audience for lunch and dinner. A lot more retail there is not necessarily a solution. It could actually make the parking situation worse in the near term due to more daytime parks making lunches tough. So the bottom line, everyone that's viewed that space loves the Mills sixty-seven space. However, for a restaurant, in their opinion, to work, it requires significant issues outside of the Sanford Mill control, the access to it, the perception of danger due to nearby dilapidated mills and the lack of parking. So in in more recent conversations this summer with the planning board, their willingness to entertain alternate alternative uses to that first floor will help them solve cash flow problems that they've been unable to resolve. Again, working as hard as they can to try to find a a restaurant for that space. So again, um, that sort of that adjustment will help. Uh, and you know, in recapping, I I just, it's it's kind of mind-boggling when you start to recap what would, in in this most recent one's opinion, make for a viable restaurant space. Tear down the Boilhouse, extend parking, add enough a deck, get your developer next to it to have property that's opposite in housing, as well as get your uh your your building owner for International Woolen or other investors there to make improvements, especially, you know, the section that faces the Sanford Mills, the aesthetics and and future tenant. So obviously not simple, uh, a number of things that would need to be chipped away at. But again, uh, an option to at least fill that, there's a waiting list for their housing, to at least have um activity there with people living and working in otherwise vacant space is a is a at least a short-term solution to that space. Um, the next thing is is uh is Sanford Net Fiber. I think you're familiar with this uh with our expansion plans. We've we've uh, we talked to you in in May about uh approaching the um uh the ECD for additional grants so that we could hire an industry expert that would perform a survey, survey work basically to get and determine interest in residential expansion of Sanford Net Fiber, which is our community broadband network. And we did receive approval, but it takes some time to uh to get the uh the gack in hand. But we were able to begin the first week of August with an RFP. We let that out the door. Uh, we collected up a series of questions from interested vendors. We provided answers. We ultimately received three proposals and some sample work products. Um, along with the Growth Council, the city manager, GWI, we we provided copies uh to review and score of these proposals. We met virtually and selected Uptown Services of Colorado. They've got one principal in Colorado, one in Arizona, uh, and that was mid-September. Why we selected these guys, they have an extensive portfolio of similar studies with a hundred municipalities and utilities around the country. They had excellent reference checks, and there was a sample twenty nineteen report they provided to us that was uh was the, you know, aggregated condensed and analyzed version of their of their work, which they provided to one of the city councils uh that was in their portfolio. And again, it was uh, it was uh, you know, tremendous even for me to understand uh as as well as uh these studies that they've done uh have led to a, you know, multimillion dollars that have been invested in broadband networks around the country. So again, and and their pricing uh put them uh to the front of the pack as well. So we worked through a list of tasks with them, uh, with the, again, the tasks they were to do, the timeline they were laying out. They were providing us a specifically valid residential survey, both by phone, uh, which has just been completed uh yesterday, end of the day yesterday, and as well as an online survey that will start up tomorrow. Um, they were in-depth, or there will be in-depth interviews that we were scheduling right now that uh that I think have already scheduled for the rest of this week. That's with a dozen prospective large business accounts, companies, nonprofits, housing developers. Um, and the third piece of their work is really to assess the community benefit, including smart community opportunities. So again, uh, timing's good in terms of the work that the uh that the city's done, uh, you know, in that area. So as I mentioned, the residential phone surveys, that process ran October twelfth through last night. And um, there is a link to the surveys that we just got tonight uh that will be open and available tomorrow to any Sanford Springville resident. That's going to run October twenty-first through the thirtieth. We'll publicize that through newsletter, Facebook, website. We also benefited last go-around ahead of the phone surveys by getting the school to add that due to their uh the app, their news that they provide to all their parents. We'd like uh, you know, parents to weigh in as well with how things are going right now for them and what they'd like to see and what sort of price points and would they be interested in switching over to Sanford Net Fiber uh in the future. So again, you may recall that uh that Steve and I, Steve Buck and I, visited Cambridge with a bunch of other communities that have been selected. Um, I say a bunch, there are only five of us, five communities represented, but we had public and private investors there. We had the Post Road Foundation taking us through a financial tool tool for broadband expansion. Uh, and really, we walked away from there knowing that all we'd had so far were estimates of what the take rate might look like, uh, you know, in best-case scenarios. But ultimately, what we need is an investment-grade take rate percentage that we're getting, that we're going to secure through this uh through this process that we're involved in right now. Uh, so really, the uptown survey results are the next big step for us in expanding Sanford Net Fiber. And uh, you know, it my pitch tonight is we hope that our residents and prospective companies will do their part and participate uh again, through that random uh phone uh process, but as as well as uh, you know, when they see this link, uh, as long as they're a resident of Sanford Springville, they're welcome to uh to complete this survey as well. So that, all that information will be pulled together for us in this report format that I described to you. Uh, so that's the um, that's the plans around Sanford Net Fiber expansion. Shall I continue?
Yes, that sounds great. Thank you.
The uh, I wanted to, for anyone that missed the fact that uh the Summer Commons TIP was approved, just reminded to our uh our residents out there that the uh city council has approved that. Uh, it supports a private sector investment, healthcare facility. It's a twenty-five million dollar investment, creating and retaining over a hundred jobs uh for ninety-four mostly private beds for skilled nursing and assisted living with memory care. Just a uh, just a world-class facility that is opening right here in Sanford, Maine next spring. Uh, Steve, you did a nice job explaining this behavioral unit. I I got to tour that as well. Uh, for those uh that aren't unable to, I would definitely encourage uh you to take this virtual tour. I agree with Steve, it's just really well done and really shows us uh, shows us off and shows us well. Um, and you know, I I also, I think it stood out for me, Steve, you had mentioned this, but when they said to me that we had hired these new medical professionals uh with quote-unquote no problems. And so, you know, to me, I'm just hoping it's it's the ongoing signal that, you know, the work that we're doing here is starting to, is starting to take hold and that uh this actually may seem like a place where you should be coming to work at world-class facilities and take, uh, you know, well-paying professional jobs. So uh, again, we'll have that link to that uh virtual tour in a number of places, uh, disseminate as widely as we can, and then again, encourage um all residents to take a peek if they can't get over there themselves. Um, a couple more quick things. The um, the the money's continued to be available for pandemic-related uh business uh issues. And so the EDA has awarded one point, almost one point three million to uh the the SNPDC. I think you're familiar that I'm on that Board of Directors. We certainly want to keep the information flowing. It's a it's a new batch of revolving loan funds that they have. It's first come, first served, but we'll definitely keep our companies aware of it. Um, and again, the uh, the CDBG program, there's a five thousand dollar program that's available, microloans, very small companies, one to five employees. there's a five thousand dollar program that's available, microloans, very small companies, one to five employees. We're getting the word out on that on a regular basis. We want our companies to be applying. You may have noticed last week that the governor announced the Economic Recovery Grant awards. Almost a little over twenty three hundred awards around the state. There were two, over two thousand small businesses, over two hundred and fifty nonprofits, total of a hundred and five million dollars was was awarded. And the average was just over forty five thousand dollars per award. I'm still unable, but I've been trying to secure the names. I think we had thirty recipients, as I recall, but I've not been able to get a list yet. We obviously work a lot with these companies and we'd like to know, you know, if they have in fact benefited from. But stay tuned on that. Hospitality sector, particularly lodging and accommodations, with the largest percentage, as you can imagine, around thirty five percent of the awards. The phase two of that program was announced with another ninety three million dollars. Applications have been extended out through October twenty ninth for that program. So again, we encourage our companies and and others, nonprofits and others that are in that eligibility list to to apply for this for this program. Two more quick things. One, I think is is, well, let me just say, we we received an update last month from Mo Killey, the Development Director for the Three Bears Resort. Used to be called York Pines, used to be called the Maine Sports Resort. And what she wrote to us, and I say us, it was those of us that had put some money down for both the survey work that she did as well as some drafting of the renderings for the properties. And so to us as funders, she sent us a note that is with great regret, disappointment that I convey to you the status of the Three Bears Resort. As everyone's aware, the pandemic has had a significant impact on the tourism hospitality industries. Conferences have been canceled with no rescheduled dates, indoor water parks have been either closed or reopened with restrictions. Given the current situation, the property owner and I have been unable to secure financing for the project. I can say with confidence that we have exhausted every possible option. This includes email exchanges, conference calls, Zoom meetings with developers, anchors, mortgage specialists, venture capitalists, real estate investment trust funds, hedge fund managers, and currently owner operators of similar facilities. Unfortunately, they all reached the same conclusion. Based on the uncertainty of the future, this project is too high of a risk. So currently, the owner and Mo have been brainstorming new concepts for the property. They have welcomed our thoughts. We'd be interested in meeting with anyone to discuss possibilities. They expressed appreciation to those that funded the feasibility study and the architectural renderings. There is still a significant amount of information that's been gathered with with the studies, with the renderings, with the information we've collected over the over the many years for any consideration of future projects. But the Three Bears Resort, from the owner and the development director's perspective, is 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 no longer viable. And again, if you read the literature right now that's circulating, the owner operators, the investors in this industry, everyone seems to be waiting for consolidation. What I've been advising folks is that it's more likely that we'll see a gray field development where you take a property that's that's closed because of these conditions and maybe you rebrand it, but it's unlikely that green fields will be on the front of that list for some time. But again, you know, I don't have a crystal ball on this and I'm sort of watching and waiting as some of you are. The last thing I'll say is that is that One Eagle Drive, we did have an open house down there. We have been working with Maine and Company, Focus Maine, the Maine International Trade Center, all of our usual colleagues and partners to to explore, you know, prospects there. We did, we did make some progress with a European manufacturer. They have been unable, they've narrowed down a couple of locations in Maine. They've been unable to travel with the current travel restrictions. They're unwilling to ink a deal virtually, and so we're sort of in a holding pattern in terms of getting them to physically get at the One Eagle company. That video we provided has been circulated widely to all of our colleagues. And again, we just continue to indicate that we've got a, you know, a great upgraded facility there, industrial facility of almost a hundred thousand square feet. And with that, if Jen Caneely can hear me, if you could provide the the market report for the past quarter.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can, Jen.
Thank you. How's everyone this evening?
Doing great, thanks.
Okay, I'll jump right into the marketing. As Jim mentioned, we've been doing two things. One, we continue to promote Sanford Net Fiber, both on the commercial side to businesses. And the next step that Wayne right now is producing an explainer video, which explains Sanford Net Fiber is city-owned and then the first ISP provider is GWI and then going to a customer that's currently using it and giving an excellent recommendation. So we'll start pushing that out next week as well as the next steps on the residential process to get broadband internet service for the residential side. We're continuing our efforts on the video outreach. We produced a new fall commercial promoting Sanford Springvale with McDougall Orchards, Cycle Sanford, and the Parks and Recreation Department. That's currently been running on our website, the CW, Facebook, and YouTube as well. We're also currently working on a business recruitment video. As far as advertising this quarter, we've been busy. We've had a nice layered approach. We ran the full page report in Maine Biz and we have another quarter page article coming up for December. We've run on Comcast Television in the Sanford Rochester market area. We've also been on the digital OTT with Comcast. So if you're watching television streaming it, that's how you would see the commercials as well. We've been on the CW, which is a broadcast station in the Portland Auburn designated market area. So whether you have DirecTV, Dish Network, cable or antenna, you can do those messages. We've also continued social media on a consistent basis. Mailchimp, we've been sending out the e-newsletter every Monday. And then again, if there's something more specific or time-sensitive, we'll send that out as well. And also on our Facebook, we've been posting a lot regularly on everything going on in Sanford, whether it's the absentee voting, Sanford Net Fiber, to One Eagle Drive. And again, just continuing to push those messages out there. And we seem to be getting a pretty good response and a lot of positivity, which is nice. I know this may sound a little bit repetitive, but how I like to do the marketing is, you know, a quote from Robert Collier, success is the sum of small efforts repeated day in and day out. So by continually putting these messages and stories out there in the different mediums and the different reach that we can reach both residents now as well as the broader reach, then I think we'll continue to grow Sanford and work towards achieving some of your goals that are on the marketing plan and the comprehensive plan. Any questions on the marketing and advertising, anything I can answer for you? I just kind of, I know you have a lot on your agenda, so I just wanted to give you a quick overview.
Any, any questions from the council at this point?
Just, just quickly, since I have seen very few of these videos, I'm wondering if you're hitting the right markets. So I don't know what sort of a take you're getting on this, the stuff you're putting out, but I thought I'd throw that out there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes, I was just wondering, what, what are, what are you, what are you using for metrics to measure if the marketing is like working and reaching people? Is, are we doing surveys with like McDougal's to see if they're doing more business? Or how, how does that all work? How are we seeing our results? Or know that it's hitting anybody like Maury was saying?
So I've been looking at it more as a media buyer. So by purchasing the certain amount of impressions or an audience. And right now we have it set at adults twenty one plus flourishing families with an income level of seventy five thousand plus. And we had talked about starting directly with Stanford and then working our way out. So for the cable system down there, it's Comcast where I placed the media buys, but it would be on viewed on Atlantic Broadband. So there's an average of four hundred commercials per month that run on those stations as well as on digitally. The CW, we have two hundred and fifty commercials per month and then we also run on Facebook. So those are the three mediums we're currently using as well as the website. But happy to show you the delivery and the audience as well as look at other mediums as we continue to move forward or look at redefining who our target audience is.
Thank you. Any, any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I had one.
Please.
Getting back to the Stetson Trust, been getting, as usual, a lot of calls from the neighbors about what we're going to do with that building. As far as marketing, you know, I I don't really see that happening. I I believe the sewer and water districts have foreclosed on the properties. I've always said that I think that if that property would be demolished, it probably would be more marketable. And I think that by just leaving it as is, it's just a matter of waiting for something to happen again from a public safety perspective.
Does someone want to give a brief update on this? Yeah, please.
May I respond?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, and I apologize, it's in front of me. I meant to mention Stetson Trust. Sorry, I went right over it. We're working with with the city and the property owner, as you said, Council title, Sanford Sewer District, to facilitate transfer of that property. We're working with an experienced mill redeveloped. And again, they're, they're on a pretty aggressive, pretty aggressive timeline to own that property. And again, you know, if God willing and the creek don't rise, you know, we see an exchange of that happening in this calendar year. So that's the, that's the plan right now.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just being one local resident, I've, I've heard that same thing repeated the last twenty five plus years and it's still, I think from a public safety perspective, what would be good for Sanford, I think that researching some grant to demolish that and therefore after that we can market it better. And I, I really will repeat that over and over again. I just think that at least from folks on the east side, what a concern from a public safety perspective. If that property goes up in flames again.
Well, I can say, at least from my experience dealing with the developer that that we're discussing right now, this project probably would have been well underway hadn't the first, hadn't, you know, the tower been burnt originally. So that that fire in the second tower in the back there put the brakes on what looked to be a done deal several years ago. So I, I have full confidence in the developer that we're referring to, that we, you know, rather than paying, because a grant isn't going to get us to demolish that building. There's, this developer would bring an injection of apartment buildings and apartments and life into that neighborhood. Where, yeah, currently in a state of affairs, but I, I don't want to give anybody the impression that we're pleased with the way it is currently. I think we're on the cusp of turning that entire facility around in a very positive way. So if that doesn't
I would just concur, Mr. Mayor. And again, I apologize for not being able to share much more in detail. I certainly could if we were in executive session. But again, I, I would, I think we're all in agreement that that what exists right now is not what we want. You know, we've got a tremendous opportunity there as a gateway overlooking that pond. I like what I'm seeing. I like what I'm hearing. And I hope that we can share more of this publicly as we progress in the next few weeks.
All right. So I, I did want to give a shout out to who worked, gosh, the last seven years to to bring an amusement attraction to South Sanford and put in tireless hours and much of it on her own dime and just trying to get something for the city. Mo, you know, a lot of people don't know Mo, but she, she's involved in a lot of different things and really a great citizen of Sanford and someone that's just looking after our community and trying to get things pushing forward here. So Mo, we appreciate all you did to try to push this amusement attraction forward and hopefully it'll, it'll post COVID, maybe it'll be revived one of these days. So but thank you for your efforts. They greatly appreciate it. Okay. Any last comments before we move on to the planning discussion? All right. So next up, thank you, Executive Director Nyman, and thank you for the marketing update. Jennifer, we appreciate it and we'll move, we'll move forward. Okay, twenty dash one fifty two dot zero one, order to approve the, I'm sorry, wrong item, nineteen dash seven seven three dot zero one, quarterly report on update of the city's comprehensive plan. I'm assuming you have Director Delavalle with us?
Yes, I am.
All right, welcome.
Thank you and good evening. Work is continuing apace on the comprehensive plan update, preparing the inventory chapters and the public engagement strategy. Planning has continued to work with spatial alternatives and the IT department so that we can create an online presence that will engage the community in updating the comp plan. It'll be a one-stop shop where people can access information about the update and provide feedback on various elements. It's also where we will advertise the meetings and it's also where we will conduct online forums and surveys. One of the things that we hope to start working on in the next couple of weeks is actually starting to prepare a general timeline for the process to start moving from inside the department and out into the community. So thus far, we've prepared seventeen maps, including population demographics, housing, historic and archaeological, land use, water resources and natural resources, and they're all in draft format still because we'll keep updating them as we go through the process. We're also currently working on maps for the utilities chapter, the public facilities chapter, and the parks and recreation chapter. So we have completed most of our data collection for most of the chapters, including natural resources, housing, utilities, land use, public facilities, transportation, recreation and open space and physical capacity. To date, we have largely completed four of the twelve inventory chapters with four more of those chapters well underway. We've continuing to do the data, remaining data collection mapping and working on those remaining inventory chapters and the additional four. So that's pretty much where we are. I wanted to make this short and sweet after you've had a long evening so far presentations. And I am available for any questions you may have.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you for the concise report. I guess the million dollar question is, with this, with this sort of progress you're making, where, where does that put us on the completion? What's your estimate on having, you know, a new comp plan to vote on?
Sure. I'm hoping that we should have something. We'll be working with you much more intensively over the late spring, early summer and hoping that we'll have a product to you by the end of the summer.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Questions? All right. Well, thank you, Director Delavalle. We appreciate the update tonight. We'll see you next quarter.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, public participation. Anyone here this evening to sign up for public participation? If you'd like to speak, just go ahead and raise your hand. I'll sort of peruse the list of people. So this would be an item other than what's on the agenda. If you'd like to share any thoughts, comments with us, this would be the time. All right. I'm not seeing anybody and I'm not hearing anyone, so we will close public participation. Public hearings, the city council will take public comment on the following, twenty dash one fifty eight dot zero one. Public hearing on proposed amendment of zoning for map R twelve dash ADC from rural residential RR to rural mixed use RMU. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here speak in favor? Is anybody representing this topic?
I could certainly provide the background.
Tom, this is John Maves.
Tom, this is John Maves, obviously we're supporting this, so I won't say any more than that.
Okay, thank you for that, appreciate it. I heard someone else speak as well.
It was just Beth, I was gonna say, if there was no one there to speak on behalf of it, that I certainly could do so.
Okay, and and this line item is further in the agenda, um, and this is the two-read deal, okay. Okay, so and and this was, this was, sorry, this was viewed as zoning, right? Do I have that correct? This is the 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 issue that Council Stackpole referenced?
Yes, it was viewed as zoning.
Yes, it is, yeah. Okay, thank you. And and the the subcommittee supports this zoning change?
Yeah, I as I, as I remember things, and uh, yeah, it was a week ago or so, so uh, you know, I might be a little bit fuzzy on these things, but uh, a- as I remember, uh, it was, it involved a uh, a traffic issue, uh, that there were some uh, some neighbors uh, in the vicinity that were concerned about safety issues and viewing traffic. Uh, I believe that uh, uh, the the uh, the company that's doing the renovations uh, owns the land, but but part of a lot was not zoned in in such a way that it could be used to remediate this uh, safety issue. Uh, I think I got it there.
Excellent. Okay, cool. So anyone else here to speak on behalf of this item? Anyone here speak against? Okay, hearing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Uh, nothing on the consented gem of this evening, no old business and up to new business, nineteen dash nine seven two dot zero one, order to declare a state of emergency and set forth an extended emergency ordinance, amending chapter twenty, dispersment of warrants during the coronavirus pandemic twenty twenty, thereby amending chapter twenty to delegate the city manager to sign warrants on behalf of the city council. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
Second it.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, City Manager Buck, do you wanna walk us through this real quick?
Yes, uh, so ju- just quickly without getting into the weeds of the details, so this this is the second extension on this particular emergency ordinance. Uh, this is to allow uh, myself as the city manager to act on behalf of, as the delegate of the city council in the signing of uh, dis- dispers- dispersment warrants relative to payables and payroll. Been doing that for the last two periods on this, uh, it coincides with the governor's extension of the emergency ordinance, uh, which takes us through uh, November at this point in time. I fully anticipate her to continue to extend that, uh, because we're not seeing coming out of this pandemic anytime uh, before the end of the year. This would extend it for another ninety-one days and continue on with that process until we get back to a point where the city council is is actively back in the building again and has the ability to review this as part of their normal flow of work uh, coming in for council meeting.
Excellent. Questions on this from the council?
No. Well said, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hensler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero. All right, next up, twenty dash one forty dot zero one, order to approve and authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Montgomery Consulting Group, Inc. in the amount of four thousand dollars to conduct an independent fee estimate on the engineering and consultant contract for the reconstruction of taxiway C at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. All right, is Allison with us this evening?
Yes, good evening, I'm Allison Navi, I'm the airport manager down at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. This is step one of a taxiway reconstruction project that we're working on. So this has been in our work plan with the FAA, um, and also main DOT for about five years now. The taxiway has degraded enough the pavement that it merits a reconstruction. So whenever you go for federal funding in the airport improvement program, there's a whole set of different procedures that you have to follow. What we did, um, if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we approved the consulting firm that will do the design, the permitting, and then the uh, resin engineering for the construction itself. So the next step to negotiate the contract with them is to narrow down the scope of work, so all the little ins and outs of all the different things that we want them to do for the project. And then we take a blank scope of work with a fee, and we send it to this Montgomery Consulting Group, and they do what's called an independent fee estimate. So this is required by FAA, that independent fee estimate, then I go back to the consulting firm with that, and you use it as a very educated way to negotiate the contract with them. And it's required um, by federal rules that we have to be within ten percent when we get uh, when we get to the end of it. So it helps you, usually they come in pretty close, um, and uh, you're you're able to to kind of go from there. So this four thousand dollars is eligible for reimbursement, so ninety percent of it is reimbursed through the grant by FAA, five percent is from main DOT, and then we pay the remaining five percent. I think it comes out to about two hundred dollars is what we're actually on the hook for with this. Um, any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer. Montgomery Consulting Group is also a disadvantaged business enterprise, um, so we have a a whole program within the federal pr- um, grant program where we have a goal of four point one percent of all of the different projects that we do, um, are with disadvantaged business enterprises, so that's another great plus of using Montgomery.
Excellent, and I know that Attorney Mayor Hensler offered to pay the two hundred dollars of our share, so that's really generous of him, so.
Well, second that, Mr. Mayor.
You've got a bad connection, you're breaking up.
All right, so any uh, any questions for Allison this evening?
No.
Pretty straightforward? All right, so we-
Yep, so the next step after this one will be, once we negotiate that, we'll be coming due for acceptance of the contract with Gale as a result of the negotiations from this one.
Perfect, thank you for that. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, Council Hanselman?
Yea-
I'm gonna, I think that's a yes, all right.
Oh, yes, all right.
Connection issues.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hensler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero. And let's see, don't go too far, Allison, twenty dash one forty-seven dot zero one, order to approve the and authorize the city manager to create a special revenue account for the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport staff to maintain the Sanford Airport Solar LLC solar facility for the term of the solar land lease agreement. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
Second it.
All right, that was a mouthful, could you give us the explanation, Allison?
Yes, it's the moment we've all been waiting for, the project's almost done. Um, so what we negotiated in the land lease itself was the right of first refusal to do the maintenance, if that made sense. So I've been hard at work, um, myself and my maintenance supervisor, coming up with a game plan, we've been cruising around the um, whole compound, looking at different different options of how we're gonna do this, and I've determined that there's, and they're listed right there, there's five different elements to the maintenance of the project. One is the vegetation management, which is mowing. Two is the fence line maintenance, which um, both Joe and Matt have their applicator licenses, so we would be able to do that, and then as well as um, hand trimming and things of that nature. Three would be any kind of snow removal that Nextera would require, if they need access to the gates or to the inverters or any of the arrays themselves. Four would be the roadway maintenance, um, we've built several miles of gravel roads for the project, so any kind of grading that those need. And then five is the IFNW required these wildlife buffer zones, um, and these are different areas that are desirable to some of the flora and fauna out there, where the vegetation needs to be maintained in a very particular way. Um, so those those have, are a completely different task all to themselves, and it probably only needs to be done a few years, every few years. So the primary part of this is the vegetation management itself, the mowing of it. The rest of it, um, as far as the roadway maintenance and the buffer zones, we can contract out separately, so this will involve the creation of a special revenue account, and that's why I'm asking um, for approval for tonight, so that we can fi- basically fund the project. So this, um, we've been negotiating back and forth with Nextera as far as the cost per acre and how the methodology of how all of it's gonna work and the background and nuts and bolts of it, and it's a pretty complicated scope of work and and amount when you really get down to it. Um, and what we wanted to do was, we we're negotiating that in good faith behind, kind of behind the scenes, and talked about that um, in executive session, so that since the negotiations are more proprietary, and the special revenue account will be run so that we purchase all of the specialized equipment that we need for the mowing, um, and then we invoice and fund the whole project through that. So that, the way that we worked out the the numbers and the funding, that account will always be in the black. Um, and any kind of surplus that we're making off of that, which will be a good amount of money, um, we'll be able to put back to the airport to fund capital projects, um, and other different planning, planning projects and things of that nature. So this is gonna be very, very good for the airport, very similar to the land lease agreement. Um, so it's just another methodology in line with our business plan to make sure the airport always stays self-sufficient financially and doesn't have to rely on taxpayer money from the city.
Thank you, and and we did see this at property, um, and went through sort of the fine detail. I guess the, one of the questions right out of the gate i- is, you know, what what is the oversight um, as it relates to the money that is, that that has put us in the back, uh, put us in the black, excuse me? So how how's, you know, I understand that it can be re-invested into, you know, other items, of course, but what what is the process to to sort of manage that account once it's able to uh, to, you know, to expend it?
Yep, if I if I could take that, please. So part of this review process and the vetting of of Allison's development of uh, you know, the cost analysis as far as providing the labor, the equipment, uh, you know, fuel utilization, hours assigned, et cetera, to that, uh, and that results in a uh, specific amount of revenue for for the city for the various uh, operations. The wildlife buffer zones are, will be managed under a contractual basis, uh, there is a uh, specific markup as far as that's concerned as well. The establishment of a special revenue account allows you to to basically run this as an enterprise. It's it's an enterprise account is what it amounts to. So the maintenance operation will be run as as an enterprise account, uh, the uh, billing that's being set up on this will be billed out to Nextera, they'll pay us for the maintenance, uh, there is a profit margin in that, that profit margin will be uh, retained, so the the expense will be, so you you bill for the services, uh, the expense associated with the services will be uh, debited to the special revenue account, uh, the revenue coming in will be credited to that account, and the net will be retained in the special revenue account for which that will be up for annual consideration. So in lieu of uh, the airport requesting uh, under the capital improvements program, the needed funded for equipment replacement, uh, other facilities improvements and such under that, the special revenue account will be in a, an account that the council can look at as far as the budgeting process, to draw from that first and offset that capital need element. So pursuant to the, I've said this a multitude of times, you know, there there's a multiple, there's a multitude of ways to get an economic benefit from a well-designed alternative energy project. This is one of the last steps that we have in here, we had envisioned this from the word go in in this project, and had the foresight to to negotiate this into the pending lease at that point in time, was to have first right of refusal, uh, not knowing the details, not knowing what we're gonna be up against, but we anticipated that. We now know what we're up against, Allison and her staff have traveled and looked at other projects and talked to people that are maintaining those and in the development of this. Uh, so the special revenue account will be there to harbor the net profit profitability from this this maintenance operation, and then it will be used to further offset capital needs and other elements for the airport.
Excellent.
So it addresses, it addresses, uh, it takes further elements off from the city's current balance sheet that would have otherwise come out of general taxation and replaces that with special revenue.
Thank you. Uh, Diane Connelly just texted or in the chat, that she has a question?
Yes, can you hear me, sir?
Good, thank you.
Hello?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Yeah, my question, I I do realize that the airport solar is a long process, and it's been a couple of years since uh, the planning board um, okayed it, but there were some conditions that I had questions about. Uh, there was some uh, chatting about uh, whether Nextera was going to do the maintenance of the mowing, um, and I just want some clarification on that. I know there's been a lot of amendments, I was wondering if you could check in on that, please?
Okay, we we, so, we can discuss that at property, I don't know if anybody's prepared to speak to that currently.
Yeah, I was trying to look for it, and I couldn't find it.
Yeah, so Diane, under this proposal, the the city would would uh, exercise its right of first refusal to perform that maintenance as far as the mowing is concerned.
Okay, I just-
We'd also hire a contracted firm to do the wildlife buffer, because if anybody's been out there to see that, that's a very specialized operation, so the trees in this wildlife buffer zone were um, decapitated at fifteen-foot elevation, that needs to be done on a regular basis. Uh, it creates specific shade line for the various species of special concern that are being protected by that uh, transitional zone out there, i.e. black rays or snakes. Uh, so that takes a specialized series of equipment, so the, but the city would would be the um, single point of contact as far as that maintenance agreement is concerned, uh, as far as the airport as well as the offsite elements of it.
Okay, I wasn't uh, talking too much about the trees, it was more like mowing in and around the arrays.
That that's what we're speaking of currently, Diane. City would would take that over as a, as an operational procedure on an annual basis, as well as the snow removal uh, and other elements around the panels themselves.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you. So anything further on this?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, what what's going to be the financial oversight of this? I guess I'll ask that to City Manager Buck. Will this be audited uh, along with the city's uh, auditing process? Uh, go ahead.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So by setting up the city council, uh, sanctioning the setting of this special revenue account, it goes onto our books, uh, it it becomes part of your warrant process, uh, it's subject to city council approval as far as utilization is concerned, it is part of the audited process. Uh, you know, we we've been through this, but let me put it this way, Bob, we get the okay from our finance director, that's, uh, once you get that, you you can breathe a sigh of relief, so. We we have Ronnie's okay on this, so, no.
Just just asking a question, um, so thank you for the answer, yeah.
Yeah, but absolutely, no, it it stays on the city's books, it's part of the audited process, it goes through the warrant process, and it's subject to uh, budget review as far as utilization of that special revenue going forward.
Good. Thank you. Any further questions?
No.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hensler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, twenty dash one forty-two dot zero one, order to accept the bid for the demolition and removal of four, of the forty-nine North Avenue building from Alex Deere excavation, and the firm fixed price in the amount of four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Yeah, is uh, Director Housey with us this evening?
Yes, I am. Um, this is a uh, a property that's in the land bank, it was found to be dangerous uh, on October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, um, so about a year ago, um, the city has taken out the asbestos that was done um, earlier this year. Um, this uh, property is owned by and heirs of, um, and they've uh, haven't been able to find them. Um, in addition, um, the mortgagee uh, is the US Department of Agriculture, a federal agency, um, they they haven't taken steps uh, to abate the nuisance themselves, uh, so they've left that to the city uh, to do on the federal government's behalf. Um, the land bank uh, reviewed um, the the bids uh, last Thursday, uh, there were a number of bids, uh, five in total, um, a good spread of pricing here, um, three bids down in the five thousand to six thousand dollar range. Uh, the low bid was Alex Dear, uh, Alex Deere excavating, uh, with uh, uh, four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and five cents. Uh, that is for the labor, uh, and um, the the time on the project, uh, the- Uh the disposal um is in addition. So I usually estimate that about half the, half the bid amount. Uh but that's a a very aggressive piece right there. That comes from uh the number of buildings that we've worked with, the variety of bidders that you see here on uh multiple projects. Uh they tend to do very good work. Um and um we um will notify neighboring properties um when the bid is scheduled. Uh excuse me, when the work is scheduled, uh they'll be notified to to keep their windows shut and uh and generally keep their distance. Um and um glad to ans- answer any other questions.
Any, any questions for Director Houseill?
Just, just one quick question, uh just to refresh my memory, uh have we worked with Seer excavation before, have they done work for us?
Yes, we worked with um Seer multiple times, I don't know how many off the top of my head. Uh but he's done very good work for the city's um, the of the group here, he's he's probably the fastest.
Great, thank you.
So we we discussed this one at length uh in the land bank uh meetings and, you know, this is a property that just truly doesn't have a, a future. There there's sort of no resolution to this property from the, from the most part. So uh this is a property that while, you know, it looks like we're extending the funds on this one. Uh and and the recouping of those funds is somewhat questionable. Um it was decided for the, for the betterment of that neighborhood and that street, the neighbors and everybody else in the community. Uh this one needs to be taken down, so um there was, there was much deliberation and and, you know, everybody agreed that this is uh this this. This place is time to go, so um neighbors, thank you for your patience. Uh as Ian said, we we declared this one dangerous hazardous a year ago. Um and it just, it's been sitting like this uh for for a long time, so thank you Ian for that. Uh any further questions? All right, we have.
You will recoup on it eventually, um you know, at at this point, we do have a special tax on it. Um that will mature um in about two years, um if if it's not paid. Um so eventually the city will be able to sell the lot. It's a, it's a reasonably sized lot on on North um, on North Avenue in in Sanford and and it has development potential in the future.
Excellent, all right, well, thank you for that encouragement, okay. Council Hanselman? Uh we have a motion, we have a second, Council Hanselman, are you with us?
Yeah.
Excellent, Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
We got you, thank you. All right, so Council Tuttle is an affirmative, Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hansel?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero, thank you very much, Director Houseill. All right, twenty, excuse me, where are we, twenty dash one nineteen dot zero one, order to approve a proposed zone change for parcel R twelve dash A D C. H A M A P S, this sign must be read on two occasions, this is the first reading. Uh anything further on this?
Oh. This is, this is Delavally, would you like a presentation on this?
I I don't think it's required unless uh.
Okay.
Unless Jonathan wants to give us a a brief commercial of what's to appear there.
There'll be a beautiful new store, a new fueling facility, a great landscaping and and quite frankly, a much safer uh scenario than it was there prior.
Excellent, when when do you think this thing will be complete?
Uh three months ago, but we missed that target, so.
All right.
You know, if you guys fast tracked this tonight and read this twice tonight, it would help us, but um. I, you know, getting into uh putting a foundation in the ground and paving right now is going to be a a bear to meet this year's uh season, so.
Yeah.
As soon as we have our, our, your blessing, we're going to move as fast as we can, but it's likely spring before you go.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Given that the break we have to take for um the election, is there any chance we could have a brief meeting to have the second reading next week? And just, because that's, that's quite a delay just because of an election.
Jonathan, would that, would that improve your world at all?
I did, I saw Mauro was voting for her, I did.
That's not why I said it, but yeah.
I know, I know.
I just remembered, we have a, a no longer than normal gap and that's, that's problematic.
This is a solid three weeks.
Yeah, that that would be uh grateful, yes.
Okay, so so City Manager Buck, is there any uh minimum requirement as far as uh the time between reads?
Uh two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
Oh, it would have to be election day?
So.
Or or the day after, or some something of that nature.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's look at, uh I don't think there's going to be any pushback on this. We we could certainly schedule a meeting for that week and just get this thing put to bed and and get uh Jonathan uh pouring a foundation.
Yeah, because I, it's, it's going to get tough after, you know, if it gets cold all of a sudden, he's going to have a hard time putting in a foundation.
He's a smart guy, he'll figure it out.
Thank, thank you very much.
Let, let, let me, let me just say, uh I don't believe I'm available election, I I'm working. Uh so I'm not out campaigning for anybody or anything like that. I don't believe I'm available uh election night, that that Tuesday, but uh.
Well, I I didn't, I didn't propose, I wasn't suggesting to propose uh election night, it'd be, it'd be one of the, one of the days of fall.
Okay, all right, so I just, uh Steve, can you run that by me? Uh in particular, make sure that it works for my schedule, because I am working evenings now.
Yeah, Larissa will, will uh, she is the the scheduling guru, she will master that.
Great.
Come up with the date, Tom, yeah, thank you.
It's unfortunate that it's two weeks in between, but it has to be, that's unfortunate.
Thank you for trying.
So more to come on that.
We'll get, we'll get it done.
As quickly as we can, Jonathan.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, all right, next up, tonight, twenty dash one forty-one dot zero one, order to authorize the police chief to accept a bid for two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Ford Police Intercepted Utility Vehicles from Casco Beach Ward of Yarmouth, Maine, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars with trade-ins. Do a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded.
We looked at this at property subcommittee.
We did, and uh obviously the, the bid process was handled appropriately, we reviewed the bids, uh this was the low bidder, um.
They confirmed it was apples to apples, so.
I think it was pretty straight.
It was a trade-in value that put uh Casco Bay over the edge, they gave a better trade-in, so.
All right, questions on this?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Right, see now we have a motion, we have a second, Council Hanselman?
Yeah.
All right.
Two, two, two of the longest yeses in council history. Yes, I'll be brief, yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yeah.
So if Anne is wondering, that's what we're kind of hearing, because she doesn't know what we're hearing.
Council Lanigan?
Uh yes.
All right, Council Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hansel?
Yes.
A resounding yes on this one, so that would be seven to zero, thank you. All right, excuse me, twenty dash one fifty-six dot zero one, order to accept. An award of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funds from Maine Housing and and to authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement. And accept funding to the city's tax-acquired existing building rehab, evolving loan fund in partnership with the Sanford Housing Authority. Have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Uh who wants to present on this one, uh Director House?
Director Hou- Director Houseill will take this, it was reviewed at the property subcommittee as well, uh but I'll let Ian take, take it over from here.
Yeah, uh so we um, we got receipt of notice of an award of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a revolving fund. Uh for building rehabilitation uh through the city's tax-acquired um program. Um we'd be um uh working in partnership with the Sanford Housing Authority. Um and um the expectation would be that um we would be um rehabbing one um to two um. Single-family or um or uh two-unit buildings at a time. Um the uh, the, the partnership would be that Sanford Housing would do the project, uh the city would hold the purse strings on this. Uh it would be um one part of the city's housing program. Um uh currently, we have limited funds uh for housing rehab. Um we're seeing about um one to two properties a year um that have rehab potential. Uh and uh this would guarantee that um we'd be able to uh rehab a building. Um and and put it back uh in the market. Uh there would be affordable uh requirements placed on this. Uh the requirements um are um eighty percent of the area median income. Um so that puts uh the income of a person who might uh buy a house uh that would come out of this uh, these funds. Uh at about fifty-nine thousand dollars a year in annual income. Um and then um if you turn that into what they'd be eligible for on a, on a homeowner loan. Um they would be eligible currently for about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of of borrowing. Um so these are uh, so uh the mechanics of this is um the city would uh tax acquire a property. Um the Sanford Housing Authority would have the right of first refusal on uh a property. Um after it had gone through a a market evaluation, um just a a structural evaluation uh between the two parties. And um and then um it would be rehabbed and then uh marketed and uh sold. And then it would be rinse uh and repeat. Um so um and expanding um funds uh for rehab over time.
Could I ask you a quick question?
All right.
Uh Director Houseill, so when we did the neighborhood stabilization program, there, it was more of a loss. We, it wasn't recouped and reused and recouped and reused. Is the intention to make sure that each of these projects can recoup the costs so that you can um return a hundred percent? Into the program, hundred percent or more into the program and continue this process? Or is it going to work like neighborhood stabilization where if we keep selling at a loss, we'll eventually be out of funds?
The idea is to grow the fund.
Okay.
Uh so, you know, the idea is to, I I'll, I'll walk you through, um we're, we're doing one right now. Um actually, it's old neighborhood stabilization funds uh through Sanford Housing Authority um on State Street.
I know.
Yep, um so they um even with the reconstruction there, they expect to sell that um at, at, at higher value than they built, they're building this new building. Um we uh also um, this is a missed opportunity um through this um, this pot of money. Uh but twenty-one Sherburne Street, um uh the city tax acquired it. Um and uh it, it, you know, sold it on to a developer um at about eight thousand dollars. Um we had commitments that it was going to be uh renovated. And so there's uh between the uh added increase in uh cost of rehab, um they're expecting to make a profit. Um so any profit would be returned back into the fund or a fund um to, to expand upon this uh, this activity.
Good enough.
Okay, great.
Awesome, thank you for that, any other questions?
No.
All right, see none, we'll uh do a roll call vote, Council Hanselman?
She disappeared, Tom, she must have lost.
That's okay, yep, Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes, and I see Anne is back on, if you want to see if she's can say something.
Council Hanselman? All right, um Attorney Mayor Hansel?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries six to zero, thank you very much. All right, next up, twenty dash one forty-eight dot zero one, ordered to authorize code enforcement officer Jamie Cole to serve civil process on Joseph T. Dunneken and Ashley Carruthers. The owners of two, excuse me, the owners of two seventy-seven Blanchard Road, Springdale, Maine. Pursuant to MRS Title Thirty-eight subsection four forty-one, do a motion?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
So um does anyone here that walk us through this, City Manager Buck?
I'd, I'd start with Jamie Cole, uh relevant, uh code ho- code enforcement officer, relevant to the notice of violations that are currently out there and the others that are pending. The action is, is a requirement under state law, is referenced here in in the uh motion, Title Thirty-eight subsection four forty-one. After review, if the city council so, uh authorize, I write up that authorization and give that to our code officer. That then gives him the authorization that he needs to exercise under Rule eighty K, file civil suit and take this matter to court. Because the owners of said property have failed to comply with the notice of violation. Jamie?
Excellent.
Good evening, everybody, uh as Steve just mentioned, um this property does have a current NOB and there will be another one coming forth soon. Uh basically, since about Halloween of last year, uh this property has been running a marijuana cultivation facility without a license. They've been holding special events on the property without permits, without permission. Um the neighbors, um both near and far, um so the director butters have pretty much all voiced concerns. Um all the way down to people on Hanson Ridge Road has voiced concerns about the traffic. About the people um wandering around the streets and the woods and trespassing and doing all kinds of stuff. Um so I have had to have several communications with the owner. Uh it does not appear as though they are willing to cooperate at this point. So I am requesting the ability to, to start the court process to um levy fines and get some compliance.
Excellent, questions on this?
Uh just mentioned that we saw this at property and approved bringing this forward tonight and um. A li- a little bit surprised that it had to be approved by council, so now we'll know in the, in the future to move this along to the council a little more quickly when necessary.
Just, just on one note for that comment, um this has been under the limelight for quite some time. It was my request not to push it forward to council um a few months ago when it really first started getting um hot and heavy there. I was actually trying to get some more photographic evidence uh for a court case. Um pictures speak a thousand words, um unfortunately, um fortunately, but unfortunately. Um they did not hold the big events that they were claiming they were going to, so I was not able to gain that photographic evidence. Um but I feel we do have enough to continue.
Okay, thank you. Um as far as I know, the activities are still ongoing, uh there were, there was a gathering as recently as two weeks ago, so it sounds like it's uh. Still unchanged, um okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further on this? Okay, Council Hanselman?
Yeah, if you can hear me.
We can, thank you, Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hansel?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero, thank you, Jamie, we uh look forward to the updates on this one. All right, and finally, tonight, we have a proclamation, excuse me, twenty dash one fifty-seven dot zero one, a proclamation declaring October to be. Disautonomia Awareness Month, do I have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right, so forgive my smile, I I thought you guys might have been messing with me when I first read this, uh because it's, it's very difficult to to pronounce. But obviously, it's a very serious issue, uh so I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation for disautonomia awareness month, October twentieth, twenty twenty. Whereas disautonomia is a group of medical conditions that result in a malfunction of the autonomic nervous system. Which is responsible for automatic bodily function, functions such as respiration, heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, temperature control and more. And whereas disautonomia impacts over seventy million people around the world, includes such. Uh as, such conditions as diabetic autonomic neuropathy and a number of other severe health-related matters. Whereas disautonomia impacts people of any age, gender, race and background. Including many individuals living in New England and along, along with the city of Sanford. And whereas disautonomia can be very dis- disabling and this disability can result in social isolation. Stress on the families of those impacted and financial hardship. And whereas some forms of disautonomia can result in death, causing tremendous pain and suffering for those impacted and their loved ones. Whereas increased awareness of about disautonomia will help patients get diagnosed and treated earlier. Save lives and foster support for individuals and families coping with disautonomia in our community. And whereas Disautonomia International, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization that provides on behalf of patients living with disautonomia. Encourages communities to celebrate disautonomia awareness month each October around the world. And whereas. And whereas we seek to recognize the contribution of medical professionals, patients and family members who are working to educate our citizenry about disautonomia in Maine and the city of Sanford. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Sanford does hereby recognize the month of October to be disautonomia awareness month throughout the city of Sanford and Village of Springvale. So on behalf of the city council of the city of Sanford and the Village of Springvale, uh duly noted, it would be City Manager Buck's uh authorization. So with that, I have a motion, we have a second. Um Council Hanselman?
Yeah.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes, and I just wanna mention, Mr. Mayor, that the falls and the buildings are blue, uh like a teal blue in in recognition of this for the month.
Excellent, thank you. Uh Council Hurley?
Yes.
Did everybody hear?
Yes.
All right, and I'm also a yes and that carries seven to zero. So this autonomia month uh for October. Thank you very much for that. All right, so we will conclude with council member comments. Council Hen- Hanselman, you with us enough to give comments?
I am. I don't know, is it bearable to hear me now or is it
It's perfect right now, yeah.
It's always bearable, Ann.
Oh, well, you're sweet, Council Tuttle. But no, I just wanted to um shoot out a quick reminder for folks who didn't hear the school committee uh meeting announcements last night, but uh J M G uh which is a club at uh high school as well, I think our junior high are putting on a really tremendous event and several of us council members, including Council Lanigan and um Council uh Hurley, are helping with it. And it's uh life on Sanford. There's gonna be over a thousand lanterns that students in Sanford are are making uh strung around number one pond uh on Halloween weekend. So should be really tremendous um showing of just what our what our youth can do and what our community can pull together to accomplish, which is kind of fun and and nice. I hope folks take a chance or uh opportunity to drive by and check that out. And then I just wanted to take a moment to thank um Sue Cody and her amazing staff with what they're doing during this crazy election time and um their efforts are are certainly appreciated by our community as a whole. So thanks to everybody who's and our our many volunteers as well. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Council Stackpole?
Yeah, uh I would like to echo uh some things you see on TV commercials and one of them is make a plan and go vote. So please make a plan and go vote. As I mentioned earlier, my wife and I have already uh voted absentee. We use the Dropbox, uh secure Dropbox in uh the rear entrance of City Hall. There are any number of ways that you can vote. Uh that information is on the city website. And I thank certainly Sue Cody and all her staff in advance for the way that they have uh managed this uh election. And let's hope everything goes as smooth as it appears that it's going to uh going to go.
Excellent. Council Tuttle?
Yeah, briefly, Mr. Mayor, I've got been receiving a lot of calls from a number of seniors about the increase in sewer bills. I know in the past that if they had had a garden, they'd get a credit from the sewer district, but that's changed. I didn't know if in the future, we might have a meeting with the board and uh try to address some of those concerns. Also, uh many know, uh we've all received complaints about Atlantic uh uh the TV and the increases, particularly this year. And uh when people call, sometimes they're put on hold for an hour. I know that Stephen had mentioned that we're planning on meeting with them. Steve, is that correct?
Uh which committee did we view that under?
We discussed this on the property, Mr. Tuttle, and if you have anybody who's having some concerns, take down their name and number and then let Larissa know and she'll take it from there.
Okay, but it's not, it's an ongoing issue, Maury.
We do, we do know that, and Steve has had extensive conversations with Atlantic broadband, pointed out some of the um things in the contract that they need to adhere to and are just and so they're gonna try to improve on their end, but they have asked for names and numbers so that they may um take care of some of the issues and get back on track.
Okay, thank you, Maury.
All right, any else, Council Tuttle?
No, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
That's it for tonight. Thank you. All right, Council Lanigan?
Yeah, I just wanna say, you know, thank you to Sue Cody and staff and um to all the voters out there. Uh November third, uh the polls open early, so uh make a plan, get out and vote and uh have a good night.
Awesome, thank you. Council Hurley? You're on mute.
Thank you. Um just a couple of quick things. I had one person who's working with the clerks on the elections uh season, one of the volunteer, paid volunteers, so to speak. Uh they were mentioning that it seems to be that uh Sue has is the one that everybody has to turn to for the answers constantly. And I didn't know if after this election is over and everybody's recovered, we couldn't do some ch- uh further extensive training of some of our paid volunteers so that we have maybe a larger knowledge base across the group. Um I'm sure there are programs out there through MMA for training and stuff. I think we have some really smart trained uh smart paid volunteers who volunteer their time for elections. It'd be great to have a little bit more depth of knowledge so that Lu- Sue isn't running around constantly trying to manage that just by herself because the other clerks have to be downstairs. And I still think, I think Springvale DMV is still not open. So I'm I'm starting to think that we really need to start looking at a plan for training on plate giving plates and um getting a few ideas of how we would come up with a secure closet. Uh maybe behind clerk's office, stealing from here or there to uh have plates, because I think that's gonna be what we're gonna need to do in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh did you hear?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um just to remind everybody about voting on uh November third or up until the Friday before. Um I've really enjoyed, it's 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 been a pleasure and an honor um to have been on the council for fifteen years. And I hope there's enough voters out there with a with a strong sense of humor and I'll get to serve three more years. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that.
Humor is good, Joe.
I wanna thank everyone who uh is within these campaigns. Uh it's it's nice to have choices. Uh we've had elections where there really has just been one candidate for one seat and uh that that's that's probably not great for anybody. Um so thank you for those people who have, you know, gone out there and put themselves on the line and and decided to run for for their particular seat. Um encourage everyone to vote, get out early, get out, vote and uh you know, do do your do your thing. Uh like as Council Stackpole said, it's it's as easy as it gets this year. So uh we're making this as 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 quick and painless as possible and uh it really has been. I I just showed up at City Hall, walked up to the third floor and I was out of there in just a couple of minutes. It was really painless. Um so that that's what I had tonight. So um from a future agenda item, I had one and I I see that Jamie Cole's still with us. I I know that uh Council Hurley hears about this one too, the the flea market on Main Street in Springvale. I'm calling it a flea market because it's, you know, they have racks of clothes and I realize it it's in various stages of disarray lately, so I think maybe the property has changed hands. Um Council Hurley, you know what I'm talking about, right?
I do. We discussed this at property and Jamie assured us it was, the sale was going through, the other people had gone. I just don't know why it's taking so long to clean up the front yard.
It just, you know, I just, I'm just hoping there's a there's there's a plan. Someone there has a plan to to address the front and and right now it looks like
Do you want me to speak of it now or at at subcommittee?
Do you do you have a one, you have a thirty second update?
Yeah, I spoke to the buyer. Uh the sale has not gone through yet. Uh it is scheduled closing for October twenty ninth. And he has dumpsters scheduled to arrive shortly thereafter. Uh so it is still going through. It was postponed a little bit, um but it is still supposed to close by the end of the month.
Okay, thank you. I- i- if it doesn't, let's let's get that on the agenda, please.
Okay.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? All right, quite a group. Okay, everyone, uh with that, we will adjourn. Thank you very much for your time this evening and uh we'll see you in the middle of November after the uh after the vote, so.
Or a little earlier to do the zone change.
Right.
We'll be in touch uh with the council. Larissa will do some scheduling and we'll go from there. So all right, thank you, everyone. Be safe.